I hope. And I've got a couple of things. I'll start with the Main Street Festival. Maggie, you and the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Dillon staff did a great job again this time. It was very, I thought ran very well, especially on the security end. The department theater did a great job on the security. I had a number of comments from people who really noticed the security out there and never gave any trouble a second thought. We had record numbers on a number, in a number of areas this year. And I'll start with the car show. And I think, y'all will see some clips on this station here on some of these pictures. We had 101 entrants in the car show. Great car show. I'm not a car enthusiast, but I really enjoy looking at these different vehicles out there and cars of all kinds. Cars. The furthest one way came from Michigan. And we had one from Florida. So it came from all over. Kiwi Bryant, his church, all their sponsors. He didn't act, so somebody out in the city. Did a great job with that car show. It's all day. And they'll start judging, I think, about three. We had to back, to space up to get cars in. And they really enjoy coming to Dillon. It was some very nice vehicles out there. Had a 5K run starting at the Wellness Center. We haven't had a 5K in Dillon since I put along, I think, 13, 12, 13 years ago. And I got a picture of it. I weren't out there, had 87 entrants into 5K. That's more than ever came to mind after doing it for eight years. We had 87 of those. Had 12 into one mile run. Had 24 participants into 15 mile bike ride this year. That raised $3,600 for research of Huntington's disease. Amtrak brings a crew from Florence. It is my wife helps them actually, get on the train with Maggie and them. They brought 127 people to the festival from Florence. Generally, some of them, or most of them, I think, get back on the train and after then will go back to Florence. Senior Bingo had 46 people in there. We had something called Pork Chopped Productions, did a play. They must have put on more than one.
Play was 45 minutes. It was the Brimington Town Musicians. And then after that, we had Paw Patrol.
Okay.
Which are two cartoon characters.
Because, get this, I know you have 382 kids.
Everybody.
Which won't, which the theater won't hold 382. That's why I thought.
They went, they were up in the balcony.
Still won't hold 382.
They were everywhere.
So that's why we need to get the theater in order too.
Todd, we gave out tickets.
Keep the fire chief out.
So we got the first ticket and the last ticket. And that's how many we had in there.
I just went way beyond my expectations of how everything was important with the festival. It was wide open with entertainment all day. The weather held out real well. These vendors that come, they have to give retails licenses, I think. The Chamber has to really go follow through on that with the participants. We had a lot of food vendors this time, like always do. Not as much on the craft side. Some of the things we've had in the past, I'd like to see again. There was some conflicts with the oil ring. That was always a hot item at our festival, weren't there this year? But overall, it was, I'll give it an A. It was a great day. Entertainment at night capped it off. So it was a good time for all. You gotta remember, a lot of these kids here don't go to the beach to ride, some of them ride to do some of the things. They're playing the games and stuff. This is what they have here. And it's a big deal with them. And I'm glad it's a big deal for the city to put it on. They get where it's getting better and better every year. Because it has gotten better and better every year. Harmon Park, y'all brought it up last month. We were gonna kind of screw something Harmon Park into corners. Well, corners are done. Two were the Yalla Javelin Club completed it. Two First Baptist Church did a great job. They wrapped that up. I think the last corner was done last week. Maybe a corner or two still has the mulch to put down. I believe that's all. So if y'all look at Harmon Park going back, like, take a look at the corners of the park. Just look how better it looks today. And using the charities to do the work. Freezes up our staff and just brings them to a sense of being involved with their community. And I think that's very important, that they take ownership in the park. And they did a great job with it. Another thing, as far as the ledger, I noticed, I think this was the biggest month we had in the two cent hot meals tax. 51,000 this past month. I can't ever recall seeing 50 plus thousand that was generated in the hot meals taxes out there. We have met the revenue budget for the year in the hot meals tax with two months ago. Town clock is still not working. The technician was here last week. I went out and talked to him and Burke was working with him. He came up, I introduced myself, and the first thing he told me, he said, "This is the first clock I've ever worked on." But he.
Finish your best.
He got, he did. He found the problem. There's a part there obviously that's broken. Bring back some suggestions on what to do. We're gonna definitely do something. They don't support the temperature gauge on the clock anymore. They quit that years ago. It's just been, I guess, the temperature part of that, those clocks have been a disaster from dating. But they don't even support it anymore. So he recommended replacing all, you know, making all four sides a clock and taking the gauges off for the temperature on the other two sides. And I think that's a good idea. So that ought to be done hopefully by the time we come and meet next month. Helps me, hopefully the clock will be resolved. On the budget, one of the things that I've noticed that I just trying to get my head around. When, fund, cleaning apartment 31. And you may know what it is without looking, it's for miscellaneous check writing fees. We're budgeting like 12,000 and we got 94,000 actually in there.
That would get worse, sure. She said fund 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, 31.
Yeah. That's the slush fund. Miscellaneous and return check fees right there. We budgeted 12,000, we collected 94,000.
That's where we have an insurance that comes back in for lightning damage. We had quite a few on those.
Where do you go out?
Where'd it go?
We already paid that money out.
Yes, yes, and we get reimbursed.
Where are deductible is?
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is, is if we fixed it and we got reimbursed for it, shouldn't it balance out?
You're asking me to put it back towards the expense?
Correct.
I haven't done that, but I can. Because we got some more coming in.
That's what.
It would reduce that expense.
I just, to eliminate confusion, I just don't make you put a line on it.
Well, what we do is when it comes in, it's revenue.
What's it add to, what, uh?
It goes back into the water, sure.
Well, it was paid out.
Probably.
And you said you expected more money to come back in, too, Miss Jan?
Right.
How much do you think you have?
Probably another 20, 30,000. I can move that to where we paid it out to reduce that expense.
Okay, and the last thing, I bet Councilman Eller brought it up last month, and I've always thought, I never brought it up, but I think we ought to do. The A-Tax Committee, you know, on the minutes, we gave the explanation, Mr. Eller, of how that A-Tax Committee is dispersed. Which 65% I think goes back to.
To the change.
The change, the 5% to the general fund.
No, no, 65% goes back to the committee.
Committee.
Committee, yeah. 30, 30% or so to the change.
Change, or in 5% to the city general fund after the first 25,000 in July.
Then, which is 100%, right?
That's correct.
But after that, it's got. Said, y'all said that was used for billboards advertising and any extra donations requested by council.
You're talking about 3%?
3%.
You're talking 3%, you're not talking about.
No, not A-Tax.
State A-Tax is what we just talked about.
Yeah, I misspoke, I apologize, but 3%.
3% is what we collect locally from taxpayers.
Which, and go primarily on, is that just meant for tourism related?
Tourism related, just like A-Tax money is. This is just a local accommodation tax that we collect that the city put on 15, 16 years ago.
All right. The only reason I brought that up, and I just want to answer my own question where we can't do it, is occasionally you have a council member, and I know it puts you sometimes in a spot of trying to say, "Yeah, we'll support this cause," or this charity, or not support it, but you don't want to tell us that. Is if Phil comes up and says, "Can we give X amount of money to Red Cross?" Or Councilman Washington comes for the criteria, or anything. Is there a way you can, and have an oversight committee for requests for council for a certain amount of money to be used? Or request for charities that we are approached with, without having to come to you for everyone?
Yeah. I mean, what we do now is basically, if it's anything to do with tourism, it will either come out of, out of these monies. The local 3% dollars.
Well, that would come out of the local 3%, not the accommodation tax.
That is correct. That is correct.
How about the Red Cross and stuff like that?
We just take that out of the general fund. Things of that nature.
That was, I mean, that, that.
That, that would come out of the general fund, because that doesn't have anything to tourism. Because that's what the 3% money is basically tourism related monies. Because you're getting it off the hotel revenue that they generate, based on that.
There's a lot of more charities that we donate to.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I don't know who we donate to. I don't know. And I'm not knocking the Red Cross, I believe in them. But, I mean, I don't know. How do I really say this? I don't ask for a lot to be donated to the city. I don't know about each other or the council. I guess what I'm saying is, how do we know what's being donated? Besides, I see what you got here.
Yeah.
But is there a atomized?
Probably not. Probably not. Not on, not on the ledger, it would not be, that's, no. We can, we can bring them as we get them and y'all can approve them.
Well, man, I don't see no big thing, you know, I'm just saying, I don't know what the city always.
We don't do.
Relay for life.
Relay for life. You don't, you got a number that you're not gonna go over.
Yeah, Relay for Life, we may do $2,000, $3,000 at the most.
Yeah, $2,000 or $3,000 for Red Cross.
Red Cross, about the same thing. And then we do some, some, um, meals that we purchase for city employees through different fundraisers. That's pretty much it.
All right, that's all I got.
But going back, you come out of Oversight Committee, what you want that committee to do, or?
Well, say you had some set up in a county where each council perhaps, 3, 4 hundred bucks a year. But what they're hoping to use is not on the treasury. No. You can't go give to, I would think, a private corporation or something. I think it would have to be something, 501(c)(1) or something for the better of your community. And, you know, at least if it all been brought up publicly that Councilman Wallace recommends $100 to displace. Some form of displace.
Well, what we'll do then is, in the future, so we'll know, everybody will know what's going on as we get them, we'll just bring them to council. I guess you vote on.
You say there's not a, there's not a lot.
It's not a lot of money, yeah.
No, it's not a lot of towns.
No.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's not.
We may do, um, I'm just thinking of another one. Some good boy scouts. Palmetto, um, Palmetto State Boys, we'll do that. You know, that's an educational thing that will help send a kid to attend that here in summer in Columbia for a week, I think it is. Things of that nature.
All right.
You finished, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Before you get any further with the, with the festival money, I've had a lot of people ask me, and I don't know why I couldn't give them an answer. But the barbecue, we used to do a barbecue cook-off, and we no longer do it. Is there, what's the reason behind that?
Well, let's first make sure we're all on the same page. The city doesn't really do the festival. That is a chamber event. We just do certain things that we do. Uh, I think the reason they quit doing it was they didn't have enough support over the years. Because it used to be done Friday night prior, is when they would cook and then judge on Saturday and do that type of thing. What we are gonna do here in the future, which Maggie and myself and Johnny Dores with the Chamber met last week, just to follow up on how the weekend went, planning for next year on some things. We meeting again, I think it's October. We'll discuss that and see if there's any interest in doing that. Whether it's barbecue or eat kind of thing.
Anything, just a cook-off. See how that, people take off again. I don't, I had people ask me, I couldn't tell them, obviously, stop.
But now, if, if the car show continues to grow, I don't know where we could.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I think it's fantastic.
Because in the previous years, it was going between courthouse and the old Ag building, you know, Third Avenue. This year, we use that for overflow for the car show.
Something's happened to that building.
Right now, nothing. I thought something was gonna happen, but I wasn't gonna talk to y'all tonight about, but I think it's.
You know, because our original contract with them, if we gave them like two years to develop that thing. Because we gave it to them for like 40 miles.
Yeah, it was a cheap thing. Now, they do, they no longer own that building. That was sold. Well, I don't know if it was sold, I think it was.
We're at a break.
But, I mean, we don't have any control over that now.
At all, not at all.
That, that doesn't transfer. We just didn't exercise it, so.
Well, our, what we had in place was they had to purchase permits, which they did.
No, they had to fix it.
Well, they were working on fixing it. And they collected or paid for permits, and Mr. Schaefer got sick and passed away. And then the contractor who was doing the work ended up with the building. But there isn't, the state is, the state is looking at possibly using that building. And I thought, we were gonna talk about tonight, but I got a phone call last week that they were kind of backing off at this point in time, calls of parking, one of the issues. Which, I'll say it, this D-Hay Health Department is looking to relocate from Anchor Street to there, possibly.
Is the building renovated, is it ready?
No, they still got to do some other things. I mean, it's been good, and then new metal studs have been put in.
Is the roof?
Roof is in better shape. You know, if somebody like D-Hay took it or got it, they've got to install an elevator. You know, there's, there's things they would have to do, but it's been pretty much good. Just a shell of the building with, with roof and new studs, put in everything metal inside our room. All the old walls have been torn out.
We got a proclamation tonight, Ms. Carroll's secretary is here. Secretary, she's presenting Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. And I think last month, we had domestic, spouse domestic abuse. I've met with this group a couple of times, and the work y'all do with Dillon has been, has been. Now, see, it looks like y'all brought this, that's, to me, it looks like you brought it down.
They are down, they are down some 61% since the peak year was 1991. So we're down like 61%. And there are a lot of good things that's going on, just want to tell you one or two. We're number 13 in the nation now, South Carolina. And the good thing about that is we're not in the top 10 anymore in teen pregnancy, so that's good. 91, 95% of South Carolinians feel that teen pregnancy is an important issue, and that we should be looking at prevention from the start. 84% believe that public schools emphasize abstinence, but teach about contraception. The bad news is that only 3% of teen mothers will receive a college degree before age 30, a four-year degree. And nearly 50% of teen mothers and children live in poverty. So that's bad news. And it's also costing the state a lot of money, about $166 million a year, just on young people that have children. So one of the things that's important, although the numbers have gone down, between the ages of 18 and 19, 72% of all births are between the ages of young people, 18 and 19. And we think that when you become 18, you're an adult. But most of these kids, a lot of these kids are in college and they have to drop out. So this year, we have adopted a theme, Start Early and Stay Late. We cannot stop because a child becomes 18 years old, stop working with them or talking with them. So we're, we're really ecstatic about what has happened, but what we realize is that there's still a lot of work to do. And I'd like to thank the council and thank Lynn for being so supportive for the last several years that we've done the proclamation. You all have been very supportive of us. And we've worked with a lot of schools and a lot of teachers in this area. They have been trained. And we continue to work with people in the community, because we can't do it in Columbia. We don't work directly with the young people. We try to provide training and technical assistance and support to community so that you can do the work within, through initiative. And I'd like to thank you all for the work that you have done.
Thank you. I'm gonna read, she's got the proclamation.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and read it.
Okay.
Whereas teen pregnancies have far reaching consequences that adversely affect the health, education, and future South Carolinians. Young people, whereas in 2014, more than 4,297 young girls, a significant night can gay birth in our state. Whereas teen birth rates in South Carolina decreased by 61% between 91 and 2014. Whereas teen birth rates in South Carolina decreased by 10% between 2013 and 14. The lowest teen birth rate for girls of girls age of 15 to 19 ever reported in South Carolina. Whereas however, the progress of teen birth rate reductions that saved South Carolina taxpayers an estimated $166 million in 2010. While should not suggest decreases in investment commitment to this issue. Whereas teen pregnancy prevention month is an opportunity for parents, teachers, educators, program providers, faith-based organizations, local elected leaders, statewide policymakers to work together and reduce, prevent teen pregnancy in South Carolina. Now it be therefore resolved that the City of Dillon performs on this day, May 9, 2016, its dedication to the future success of young people in prevention of teen pregnancy. And is proud to declare May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month in the City of Dillon, South Carolina. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a folder on that, great stuff.
Yes. And if you need materials for your community, just let us know. We'll provide that to you. Thank you.
Last one. Mike and our engineer was here at the council meeting, and you know, the rate study for water and sewer that we've been talking about. And presented you with some information. To show that we're in need of an increase in our water and sewer rates. And there were discussions of how many users we had on our system and how it would fall, how it reflect on all our users. I think I mentioned in my letter that during the month of March, that's the study that we did to see for one month, March of 2016, we had 2,934 customers that used water and sewer. Of those 2,934 customers, 12,035 used 2,000 gallons or less during the month of March. Which is about, what, 42% of our customers use less than 2,000 gallons of water. And then from 2,000 to 4,000 gallons, another 939. So from 4,000 and below, we had 74% of our customers during the month of March, use 4,000 gallons of water or less. Which, you know, kind of surprising to me. I thought it might be a little bit higher in the 2,000 to 4,000 range, instead of the 2,000 being our highest consumption users. With all that being said, based on the rate study that Mike presented to council, I'm using that particular rate study to request and propose an increase, which you'll have first reading tonight on our budget and on our rate to increase. By doing this, as I pointed out in my letter, and we'll go over it, right now in water, for in-town users for water, they pay $3.94 of base cost. And explaining the base cost is, if you're at home for a whole month and don't turn any water on in the City of Dillon, your water bill is gonna be $3.94. That's without using any water. Once you start using water, you're paying $1.57 per 1,000 gallons. The new rate would go from $3.94 of a base cost to $4.39. And the per 1,000 gallons, instead of $1.57, would be $1.75. Now, if I remember my math correctly, those folks that used 2,000 gallons or less would have an increase of $2.84 at the most, based on 2,000 gallons or less for water and sewer inside the city. Now, the sewer rate, at this point in time, is $13.46 for the base cost. And then for each 1,000 gallons is $2.22. With the new rate structure that I'm proposing, the base cost would go from $13.46 to $14.99. And 1,000 gallons would go from $2.22 to $2.46.
What's the outside charge you got?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get there. What we've done in the past with outside is using two times for both water and sewer cost. So if residents, our residents inside the city are paying $2.22 per 1,000 for sewer, those folks that live outside of the city limits is gonna pay double, which is $4.96. Right now, those folks outside the city pay $4.45.
How many customers we got outside the city?
I don't have that breakdown, do you know? We don't, we don't have that.
Not a big number.
No, it's not a big number, no.
Less than 1,000.
Less than 1,000, yeah.
God, I think they had nothing like that.
Yeah.
So we have 7, 800 outside users?
Yeah. Yeah. Somewhere around.
Five, six.
Outside users, absolutely. And that's the trend, not only in Dillon, but anywhere in this, how we always charge it, it's two times more. The thought process is the folks that live in the city are also paying taxes to the city. Where those that did not live inside the city are not paying taxes to the city. So they should pay an additional fee or a higher fee to use our services now. That's one of the selling points to get people to, and it's also is your water and sewer rates have to price of what you pay now.
Something else you need to bring up, though, we have.
Something else you need to bring up, though, is we haven't had a sewer water increase since 2006 until last year.
That is correct.
And we are way behind, if you look at the graph, we're way behind on, I mean, you know, we're, we're down at the bottom is, you know, what we charge for sewage and water, and as a result, we are, we've completed some of our depreciation fund that needs to be replenished, and this is part of doing that.
That is correct. In fact, based on what we're generating or have generated this year in water and sewer sales and what we budgeted, by these increases, we're looking at a net of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand next year, just in revenue, by eleven point three.
Which is about a seven and a half percent, I mean, if that were all profit, that would just, still be a seven and a half percent margin, which in order to stay current or to stay bonded, am I correct, with our SRF, we're supposed to have about a ten percent margin?
Somewhere in that ballpark, yes. That is correct.
How much money, do we got the depreciation fund right now?
In water and sewer?
Right.
Right at three million, a little less than three million combined. Restricted would be one point two, one point one?
One point two restricted, yeah.
And unrestricted is?
One point eight.
One point eight, so probably at three million.
Three?
Yeah.
How about, how about the, well, I'm gonna ask you about, am I saying it right, the Orville Basin?
Orville Basin?
Orville Basin, yeah. Have we started working on that yet?
Yes.
So, once we get that completed, our wastewater treatment plant will be back in full force?
Yeah. Which, that's another thing, and I'm glad you brought that up. We have spent in the last two years, two and a half years, a lot of money doing upgrades at the plant and in some of our lines.
Upgrades in this moment, we are fixing.
There you go.
They're not upgrades.
There you go.
We're just fixing what's broken and deteriorating.
So, I mean, you take, we borrowed, and I'm just using ground numbers, almost a half a million dollars to relocate the line on Highway 301 over the Little PD River. We've got a grant for a little over three hundred thousand to do some, and this is upgrades, at the lift station at Purdue and do some upgrading and repair to Commerce Lift Station.
Upgrade of what?
The upgrade is putting in the line slurry at Purdue Lift Station. And then at the Commerce Lift Station through this grant, we're doing some coating of the wet wells, that current part again, and repaired a wet well and put some ball protection in. And then, back to the Orville Basin, that was another about a half a million dollars that we've got nothing for, other than using our own money to do that one, so we, million three just in those two proj, three projects right there, that's happening all at one time.
But another question I have is like Purdue, they're a big user of our wastewater treatment plant.
They give us sixty-four percent of our sewer.
So, are they contributing money back to the depreciation fund too?
Yeah, they pay in, if you look at your, at your ledger for sewer, which would be one-twenty, Janet correct me if I'm wrong, on page two of that, you see it, Purdue depreciation?
Yeah.
They pay in, so far this year, they've paid in a hundred and one thousand dollars, roughly ten thousand dollars a month.
But indirectly, they can also pay in a fee, because part of their fee schedule is operation maintenance and repair, and any repair we do is rolled into the year's expense, so that's, that's another way that you capture back some of the depreciation money that you.
Right. So, what you're saying is when we had the big old sinkhole?
Correct.
They paid, they hit?
Well, it came out of that.
Fifty-six percent of the repayment, but what we didn't do is we didn't put it back, we used it in operation maintenance and not put it back into our depreciation fund.
Would you say that's a high average, I mean, over the last ten years, the hundred and twenty-one thousand that you got budgeted for the, for Purdue to give back to depreciation fund, is that, I'm just saying, over our ten-year trend?
We get the same, we get the same amount. Over, it was over a twenty-year period?
Okay.
When we took out the loan in nineteen ninety-six, SRF loan, that was part of the agreement of that loan, that Purdue would pay, we borrowed thirteen million dollars roughly. Purdue paid to SRF fifty-six percent.
Right.
We paid forty-four percent of that loan payment.
Right.
And a part of that loan payment, or a part of that cost, or a part of the agreement was Purdue would put in a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars every year into the depreciation account for twenty years, and the city put in ninety-some-odd thousand?
So, I realize what you're saying, but if we make the increase to the rates on our citizens, we're gonna end up generating how much in revenue this year?
From them, additional, from what we're generating now, additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, only and only if everybody stays, you know, on their same usage. And then Purdue rates changes annually.
Right.
Through the agreement that we have with them, and they will see an increase this year also. And theirs is based on, as Dr. Wallace had pointed out, theirs is based on what we call operation and maintenance recovery. And you take all that, first of January, February, sit down and go through the numbers and see what it costs to actually?
Disappointing.
Yeah, to treat sewer, and their numbers, they give us, like I said, sixty-four percent of our wastewater that's come from them. And now, on that same side, they probably, and I don't remember the exact number right at fifty percent or a little higher, revenue we get from them for user fees compared to all others, so, I mean, they're paying a good fair share, if that's the answer to your question.
Well, that's the question, I just, I didn't know what the actual number was that we're talking about as a whole.
Over, over a twenty-year period?
No, I understand the twenty-year thing, I'm talking about now that we're gonna put towards, you know, raising the rates for the city, and that's why I wanted to see how the revenues are generated.
From, from every other user, roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
But the only other thing I'm talking about is, Ms. Janet just may mention that, we got ninety-four thousand dollars coming back in. I know this is from an insurance.
Yes.
And then spending another thirty thousand, so we could talk about, you know, taking that off the two-hundred-and-fifty, not raising the rate so high, since we're getting that money back in?
Can't mix those.
Say we've already spent the money.
I understand.
We need to put it back where it sat, sort of, wouldn't?
I mean, it's already, yeah, it's already a cost to us, we're just getting back what we spent.
Right, I understand.
So, we're not gaining any of that.
Not gaining, I understand.
Well, I got the first reading tonight, and I guess to, from a water and sewer standpoint, from a budget, but we're in the process, or I'm in the process of trying to put some numbers together, there's some things out there that we still don't know, retirement, what we're gonna do on salaries and health insurance. But to even get started in that direction, and I'm not asking for you to vote at this point in time, but you're gonna have to vote in new businesses, do we need to look at another way of the rates? I mean, are you comfortable with what I'm presenting, I guess, as far as the rates still?
What type of percentages is this?
Eleven point three eight percent.
Eleven point three?
Yeah. Eleven point three eight percent.
Again, if you looked at two thousand, I mean, ten years, we went up CPI last year, it was like a two-point-eight percent last year. So, if the average CPI goes up two percent for ten years, that's twenty percent, that means you're using, you're running it twenty percent less money, and you accumulated that over that period of time. We're in a catch-up mode, and what we're gonna do, we're gonna make this adjustment, and then every year, look at the CPI.
Looking at the rate study last month, though, it still looks like even with the increase, we're still in the bottom ten percent.
Oh, yeah.
Across the state of cost of water and sewer. Is that true?
Yeah, that is correct. And just to give you an idea, when people hear about, and we all kind of had big eyes when you heard eleven percent last month, but when you look at it, you charge based on thousands of gallons. So, if water, and I'm talking about in-town users, if water goes up forty-three cent, no, I'm sorry, twenty-three cents per thousand, and sewer goes up eighteen cents per thousand, what's that?
Are you looking at less than a dollar?
Forty cents per thousand, and if you use four thousand gallons, if you use four thousand gallons, that's a dollar sixty, not counting the base rate, which would increase?
Dollar or so.
Dollar twenty-five or so. So, I mean, once again, as I pointed out earlier, if you use two thousand gallons or less during the month of March, with the new increase, you would see an increase of two dollars and eighty-four cents more a month, if you're two thousand gallons or less. If you're four thousand gallons to two thousand gallons during that same period, you're gonna see an increase of three dollars and seventy cents.
But give me a breakdown on this, I mean, as far as the garbage, your water, the wholesale bank, we had two dollars and eighty-four cents, what's it gonna be on a monthly cost for a user less than two thousand gallons?
All right, and having gotten to the garbage, because that's another, another, another thing, but which is the general fund. The garbage, based on the ordinance that I'm presenting tonight, shows a three-point-four percent increase, which is the consumer pricing index, which is, and I'm talking strictly roll carts at the residence, which is an additional seventy-five cents per month. So, if you take that seventy-five cents, seventy-five cents, and then if you use our two thousand gallon users or less, which is our biggest users, add seventy-five cents to two dollars and eighty-four cents, what's that, three? Three sixty?
Yeah, three sixty, yeah.
So, and then you, you know, do the same thing with the four thousand gallons, you're looking at three seventy, if you add seventy-five cents, four forty-five or something like that?
Yeah.
That's the eleven point three percent.
That's on water and sewer, yeah, eleven point three eight percent.
CPI would be?
Which is three point four percent. We, we increased, I think we've been doing sanitation here lately with the CPI for the last two or three years. Going following along, talking about the budget, as I mentioned last month, from the general fund standpoint, that's where garbage is, is where we bring in the revenue. We haven't done anything of taxes and property taxes in years, and the reasoning is, I've never suggested, there's no bank for the book, for what we can raise taxes on, on property to generate, in this case, like garbage, we're gonna generate an additional forty thousand dollars by increasing our rates by the CPI. We raised taxes to forty thousand dollars. We'd probably have to go about four meals, maybe three and a half.
We've had one meal that's increased in twenty-some years.
And just because?
And we backed down on that.
Just because the value of a meal is, is just not there, then the state telling you that you can't do so much on, on the L H. So, we just never dealt with property taxes, and I've always been the one, and I've been told many times, there's now a fair tax, and it possibly is not a fair tax, but those that pay property taxes, only a select few, those that pay garbage fees is everybody that lives in the City of Dillon. So, everybody gets that same increase, and there's no cherry picking. So, on the budget for the general fund, just expenditures that we're looking at, that we have discussed here in the last month or two, and I didn't think I've added them up, but we can add them up as we go. Fire department, we're looking at possibly seventy thousand dollar expenditure with purchasing ten air packs, that we purchased ten last year, the goal was to purchase ten this year, an additional ten next year, for sixty thousand dollars. And then we have our firm building where they do train these roof repairs, what this building is, or actually our old cargo containers, metal cargo containers, there's four of them, it's Keith that's correct?
Yeah, we got four, also got from the fire camp that came down last week, and they're gonna make that building where, we're gonna be able to do our certification burns in it as well now, so instead of us having to go out of town to train and open these buildings, we could look dollars an hour's, so we'll do the train there, so that the other day be helping with those.
But the old cargo containers that have been retrofitted to allow to burn, smoke, things of that nature, but the roofs are metal and they're just rotting away, rusting away, and getting on top of it is not a safe alternative. So, we're getting prices right now, and we're just estimating ten thousand dollars just to do something on top of those cargo containers where we can get on top of them. Then we mentioned about front loader trash truck, which picks up our commercial trash. The one we got now is, is on its last leg, we can make repairs to it and use it as a backup. The backup we have now is our original truck we bought sixteen years ago. A new truck roughly is two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
How much?
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. And if I'm not mistaken, the newest one we got right now, the one we're gonna push back as a, as a backup, is about six or seven years old, if I remember correctly. Yeah, I don't have a date on it, but?
We have money in, in general fund?
We do, we have depreciation money, about two million dollars, am I correct?
A million twenty-eight.
A million two?
No, one million twenty-eight thousand.
In general fund?
General fund, that's right.
And outside of the two percent?
Yes, yes.
Right, separate.
That's correct. We can do one or two things there, is?
What kind of interest rate can you give?
Talking borrowing?
Correct.
I don't know if we're gonna find that out, because that's gonna be my next thing that I was gonna tell you. We either can purchase this truck, either through depreciation and borrow it, as you've always suggested, from ourselves, and we can look at the banks and see what kind of loan interest they have, and either borrow it from ourselves or borrow it from the bank. I don't think we need to go out and spend two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars upfront when we've got a list of things that we need to do in the general fund. However, we need, we need to replace that garbage truck, I mean, we're in dire needs.
Like say, if you get two and a half, three percent money, that's pretty bad.
That's, that's, it is.
It finances over, we have five years.
And I would rather do it that way.
But they can get a rate like that on a garbage truck, we're talking earlier on.
We'd probably do seven years.
I know the shorter you go on, the cheaper the rate.
I would think seven years on that.
Well, the thing is, is it depreciates, doesn't depreciate out over seven years. At least more than under that can appreciate.
And we just see what the rates are and what kind of cost they give us for that, what our annual cost would be. But, and I don't like to put you in a, in a spot, but that's something we, we need to purchase, but we also need to order it today. It takes roughly ninety to a hundred days to get it once we order. So, if we ordered it, excuse me, tomorrow morning, we're looking August at the earliest to get it.
Need a motion?
I, I do need a motion, if that's?
But hold on, we said?
If that's something y'all want to purchase, we need one, that's just what we need to do.
Have we got, that's the lowest bid we get?
Yeah.
It's two-hundred and thirty?
Two-hundred and thirty thousand, yes.
I remember, we bought sixteen years ago, it was a hundred and sixty thousand. Oh, I make a motion, we buy the front end motor and the side, I think, probably do this, I mean, do they need upfront money?
No, they don't need upfront money, they just, I just need to show in the minutes that y'all approve from each order. So, I mean, that then tells them that the senior? that y'all approve from each order, so, I mean, that then tells them that, senior minutes that you're gonna purchase it, and I've been given permission to order, they know they're gonna get paid when it's time to get paid.
I'll send you a motion.
And a motion, we have a second all the favor, we said, I gave you that, anybody close?
One of the projects that we've been doing now for several years, and has worked out well, is resurfacing alleys, meaning that those are ours and not the state's. We've tried to do two alleys a year, I think we finished up two here about two weeks ago. We're on a budget next year again for two more alleys, and that should end all of our alley work, if I'm not mistaken. This past year, we resurfaced the alley between Railroad Avenue and First Avenue, and then from 301, east of 301, up to Fourth Avenue. So we've got everything on the south side of Main Street, from an alley standpoint, resurfaced. We now have an alley behind the old Moore's Building and Kentar House, we're gonna schedule those for next year, and then I have...
Does the garbage truck go down that avenue?
Yes, sure does.
Can't they just tear it up?
No worse than what's doing right now, I mean, right now, we have, I mean, the businesses that go back there to park, because there's some places they can get back there and park, they can go down one behind the Kentar House, and it has big old potholes, it's just old and corroded. We don't need to have any issues.
Really?
Or...
Really?
Yeah. And what we want to do there is, as we've done in most of the alleys, is we have waterlines that go through there, we redo those before we go in and do the resurfacing.
Does the garbage truck go down all of these?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much. And then we have one that is a dirt alley off of Harrison Street that runs behind Quinn's Garage and, um, Old Coca-Cola Plant, it runs from Harrison Street to, I think it's Cleveland Street, we're gonna redo those, or redo that one also, and I think that covers all of our alleys at this point in time, which we've been doing now two a year for the last four years, I believe.
What's that cost?
We budget anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand.
But that's already budgeted, that's not additional, but...
Well, we'll budget again this year, that's correct.
But it's not above budget?
No, not at all. And then from a health insurance...
Three hundred and fifteen.
Pardon?
Three hundred and fifteen thousand above budget. You said keep up with the number.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes, you doing that?
Well, I'm waiting for it, yeah, waiting on the roll.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then health insurance, so you had three hundred and fifteen thousand, you said?
No, seventy-five, ten, and two thirty, in that.
Seventy, two thirty, three, three thirty?
Three fifteen.
We got seventy, two thirty, two sixty?
Seventy-five, ten, and then two thirty.
Seventy, three hundred, I got three thirty. Sixty thousand for air packs, ten thousand for burn building, which is seventy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, two hundred and thirty for the garbage truck, which will give us three hundred plus an additional thirty for resurfacing two alleys, so three hundred and thirty thousand.
That's part of the, I mean, that's not part of the increase, because we'd already had that part of the budget.
Well, that and plus the sixty thousand and the, um, air packs we did last year also, so you could take those two out, and you take out ninety thousand there, and you're down to...
I thought you said seventy-five for the air pack, two thousand for the tops on those guys.
That's all, that's all. And then health insurance, we haven't got a final number there, Mayor, I think you threw out a number to me the other day, and I could be wrong in what I remember, probably looking at ten, fifteen percent increase, health premium on that.
Wayne George is looking at the crosshairs, and that's about a five point five rate.
Okay, right now, we're paying roughly four seventy per employee per month.
So are we looking to change it here?
It's possible, depending on what the prices come in, absolutely. And truthfully, in the last three or four years, by looking at this on an annual basis, we've always come out with a good number. And then retirement, the state has not set what that retirement cost is gonna be per employee, either in police or in the other forms of employees that we have, but we're probably looking from what the city pays in and what the employee pays in, does both pay into the retirement system, anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent increase. Now, you say, oh, that's a lot, but when you're talking, and I'm using round numbers, city pays ten dollars per employee per pay period, you're talking about a dollar fifty, and then maybe a dollar or so that an employee pays in each pay period, but we don't have that number yet from the state. And then salary increases, last year, we went across the board, I think five hundred dollars for all employees. Right now, we're looking to see where our numbers come in at, either a CPI increase, five hundred dollars, or nothing, we don't know yet, or we don't know there, until we get all our other numbers in, to have an idea. From a additional revenue from the general fund, we were shooting up, you know, it was upwards of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we subtracted some things out, down to two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but the only additional revenue that we see at this point in time is from the sanitation rate increase of three point four percent, which is gonna be an additional forty thousand dollars, so the additional revenue's not gonna keep pace with what we're projecting.
If you, I mean, you amortize that two hundred and thirty thousand of the seven years, so if you're just looking at, you know, thirty thousand dollar, or thirty-two thousand dollar increase, you know, depending on your interest rate, so, you know, you are covered, you know, with that, that increase in dollars.
And then what's...
Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, that is correct. I have not, we have not received as of yet our franchise fees from Duke Energy, that should come in here within the next three to four weeks, and you remember what we got last year? We're looking at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we should play for them.
But you didn't mention the code before, the last time you said that you were gonna put...
Yeah, I've got a vehicle to go into in code for, that's correct. And then on the water and sewer fund, everything we're doing right now is scheduled to end and be completed, and I say doing, the three projects that I talked about are the Orville Basin, the repairs and upgrades at the Pudle lift stations of, at the Pudle lift station of Commerce Drive, and Highway 301 project, all that should be done and completed, all bills paid by the end of June of this year, so that should not roll into our next budget year. The only thing that we have planned from an expense side, a big expense side, and all that won't take place in one year, is the construction of the elevated water tank, will be located on Highway 34, which we've talked about that.
You got a new estimate on that?
The last thing I've got is one point five million at this point in time, but we're, you know, in line to get some money through SRF, one is a grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Seven hundred and fifty, well, I call it a grant, it is a, it is a, it is, it is a loan, but no prints. Prints will forgive, so, you know, we pay back just the loan of seven hundred and fifty thousand.
When are you looking, no X on that?
No interest.
You said no prints?
I'm sorry, dude.
I said, I lied, I...
Interest free, I'm sorry.
You got a loan?
Pay a prints.
When are you looking at your answer on that?
It will probably be midsummer or late summer, when we know those, and then we're also applying through community on a development block grant for an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand, hopefully it will qualify, so get the grant, get the interest-free loan, we'll be doing pretty good there. I don't foresee any construction with that, starting probably middle of next year, because we have to dig it out, and that takes time, get all those things worked out, but that would be our biggest expense that we know of, not counting anything that pops up that gives us problems. And once again, health insurance and retirement and salary, same thing as it was on water and sewer, I mean, on the general fund, we're just not knowing at this point in time what those numbers will be. Tonight, as I said, we've prepared a first reading for both the budget, water and sewer rates and sanitation rates, the budget is presented as title only, we do have to have two readings plus a public hearing. I would hope that June, our meeting in June, we'll have the second reading, if you would like, and I have no issues with, if you want to have a budget workshop sometime the last May, first of June, before our next meeting, to go over some things, if we can't get everything worked out by our regular meeting in June, the second Monday, we still have until the last day of June to pass our budget, which I don't like to do, but if that's what we have to do.
Can't you just email us what the increases are, and percentage increases, and what the number increase is, and...
I can do that, yeah.
I mean, and then, and then we can, you know, send back whether we feel like we need to talk about it.
We can, once we get some numbers, usually what we do, Janet and I'll sit down, and once we got all our numbers that we need, we look at our revenue, what we have in revenue, and then, from a general fund standpoint, let's just say, using round numbers, a million dollars in revenue, our goal is not to spend more than nine hundred thousand, that's our goal, and then, you know, we may have to do some cutting here and there from expenditures. Same way on the water and sewer side, we usually try to be ten percent less than what our revenue is forecasted, and what our budgeted expenses will be. It doesn't always work that way, but that is our goal, but we will have that information probably, the biggest thing is health insurance and retirement waiting on that.
Oh, you say we need to pass a budget title only, because we even have a budget yet.
That is correct, it's just title only, there's no numbers, there's no numbers whatsoever to give you, it's just by title only, and then we'll have a final reading, and it'll either be a regular meeting in June or later on in June.
Yeah, we've done it before, I think.
Yeah, we've done that just about every year, is what we try to do.
All right.
Sorry, a little longer than what I anticipated, but something we need to talk about, I think that is all I have, gentlemen, at this point in time.
Thank you very much. Citizens report, do you think, like, regular hour, kitchen, break room?
I would.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, tonight I'd like to talk about the solicitation they have on the street, in the areas, for the Ninth Avenue, the Bruffett Street, and the West Street, and some of this is on First Avenue too, where these young guys just hang on the street, or in the street, and you can't even drive your car without going around the other side, so you're gonna hit them. It's terrible. We know it's getting warmer, it's gonna get worse, something needs to be done about this. This is not just only in the neighborhood by the stores, they just hang out, chilling, doing nothing, but blocking the streets, they think they're on the street, and sometimes they don't even wanna move. Leaving home from work, leaving from work to go home, they're all in the street, I'm leaving home to come to work, but early in the morning, they're all in the street, they're hanging out at the abandoned houses that's gonna be torn down, anything they can get to, just hanging out, chilling, selling their drugs, taking their drugs, drinking, getting high, and calling the service. Something needs to be done. I mean, it's in my neighborhood, it's in the street in the neighborhood, and it's sad. I mean, I, some of them have homes to go to, but they choose, their activities to be hanging around in the street with one another and causing havoc, leaving trash all in the street, and it's terrible. But I do like they did one thing, I'm not sure who was responsible for this, that whoever ran it under the park, they could have the park in there last weekend, when I rolled past the park, I didn't see, it looked like a trash dump. They're actually cleaner behind themselves, somebody took responsibility to make it behind themselves, for the first time in history, I believe, they might have seen maybe three or four cops or something in the street, but that was a plus for me, because the park is right in my neighborhood, so I don't know what happened, who did it, but keep up the good work, and make them do it again, but please, do something about them hanging in the street, because one of these days, make up some drunk drivers in the area, you know, from the same pack party of people, and cause an accident and kill somebody, you know, it's sad to say, but it'd be of their own, but you don't wanna have it in your neighborhood. So I would like that somebody to do, take somebody responsible to do something, to have more police in the, around the area to do something, or something, it's terrible.
It's amazing how lights can work with people.
Lights?
Lights.
Okay, then let's put some more lights, you know, because, and, and, you know, try to do something. Let's see what street it is now, the store, that's on, right before you get to the jail house, that was blocked right there, it's terrible. Another thing they do too, they're allowing the trucks when they bring the delivery to block the street, that when you come out that stop sign, you can't see unless you go to the street, by the time you get out, you might be getting hit by something, you know, so it's terrible too, where they do things, that's a bad slow area right there, I hate to say that, but it is, you know, and I live in that area, so you wanna see things change. I wanna change, you know, and I don't want to be the one to bring the change.
Is it served time of the night? It's more visible than other times, or, I mean...
From rise up in the morning, to going down in the morning. You know, I'm serious, you can, I'm, it's nine o'clock, I'm going to work, and they're already on the street. If I get to seven o'clock, I have to go take some business in the morning, they're on the street already, you know, and, and it's terrible, you come to that late at night, and they're still there, you know, and I know a lot of them just doing their illegal activities around there, you know, trying to get, because the mind is this, we're on a lot of highway here, you know, a lot of traffic there, a lot of traffic, so if they wanna sell their drugs, I'll be frank, all right, that's the perfect spot for them to stand there in that area to sell their drugs, and it's across the border. So it's terrible, and it's so sad to see that it's allowed to be happening in this neighborhood constantly. You guys did a great job when they had that last shooting back here some, about last year sometime, and you got on their cases, and they stopped hanging on that avenue, and cleared it up for months, you know, you ride through there, oh, wow, it feels good to come through here and not see all these kids hanging on the street, you know, and they got kinda scared, and they started hanging out, maybe in the woods, hoping for breath, that's what it was, but anyway, it wasn't always the street, now it's starting again, so there's no, there's no set, set time, as always, until you guys do something about it.
They need to complete force of control in that area, there's so much you can do, it's like same way with the car wash, somebody complains about revenue motors, pre-owned car wash, we'll control it out a little more, see what we can do. Neighborhoods need to take control, is there a neighborhood too, there's people that live there?
How would you, how would you such, how to control that?
Well, ownership in your neighborhood, I think, if somebody's out there raising cane at a park, you live outside a park, I think...
All non-legal movies.
That was all the time, it doesn't stop, now.
The police ain't gonna stop everything, they do. I mean, something, you got, I've got complaints about the homeless, well, the homeless have a right to be there, we can't take them off, a parking bench, a city street bench.
Our relatives, our families, we give these kids...
I understand, I understand. But we will, you know, we'll put the presence there, and I think that... You brought the night.
We don't put your face on...
Anything else. All right, thank you. Unfinished business, we have none, new business, ordinance sixteen oh nine, admissible budget from sixteen seventeen, make a motion, second, all favor, opposed. Ordinance sixteen ten, amend water and sewer rates twenty sixteen seventeen, make a motion, second, all favor, opposed. Ordinance sixteen eleven, sanitation rate decrease for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen...
Ordered sixteen eleven, the sanitation rate decrease for twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen.
Make a motion, second.
All favor, opposed. And resolution two sixteen, recognizing May fifteenth, twenty sixteen, as peace officers' memorial day.
Make a motion.
All the favor, opposed. Uh, law council member reports, Mr. Eller.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple things, Mayor. I want to go back, uh, make sure, Ms. Janet, you told me last meeting that, uh, I want to make sure that ninety-nine thousand dollars, that was for last year, well received.
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine thousand two four four is being transferred.
And you don't have an idea when the hundred and ninety-three thousand, the excess, is gonna be taken?
Well, there's no more to be taken until the end of this audit. Yeah.
We're a year away from looking forward.
That's it, Doc?
That's all.
All I want to do is say thank you to you for doing the proclamation for the Main Street Methodist Church hundredth anniversary, which I read on your behalf yesterday. We appreciate the city recognizing the church for what it's on the year anniversary.
Lee, have a, you ready to go back to fifth, uh, fifth anniversary?
I'm sorry?
Fifth, having a big, favorite fifth anniversary.
I don't know when they're gonna do it. I, I know it's on their list now.
What, what's the, uh, give me more, who, who got that?
Foundation, the historic foundation, it's, I mean, it's, the school district doesn't own it anymore. They gave it to a historical society, I guess it's, not the Dillon County Historical Society, but Betsy, you know?
Yeah, it's the Dillon Historic School Foundation.
They have the ownership of that bill.
Why they do it?
Nothing right this moment. I think they're trying to raise funds to renovate at least auditorium. I don't know what they're planning. Pardon?
You know what they're planning on doing?
You have to see, the only thing I want to bring up, and we discussed the sanitation rates, and we leave property taxes alone for sixteen years. That might need to be reviewed on a combination of revenue. I mean, I don't know if it's necessarily good, you keep the property taxes due, that's all, you know. That, I think that some combination of that would be, uh, more appropriate than what we, we saw.
Yeah, that, that, I really, I don't think we ought to look at it. I mean, um, there, there are sources of revenue that, you know, we oughta, we're given a, a format of how to generate our revenue, and there are limits on the taxes. I think if we miss our opportunities, we can't go back and capture that. And we've been a little bit struggling anyway, um, I mean, much as I hate it, but, um, it's not a lot of money. And, um, but it's, it's, you pick up thirty or forty thousand dollars, and that helps us a lot. That's all I have.
But to your corner, Todd, you're talking about stagnant one year, do the water and sewer, and next year do the property?
Yeah, I think you can look at both with a combination. I mean, if fuel goes down with our trucks, which is probably the biggest expense to get out of sanitation, although we need to necessarily go in sanitation rates. And, you know, maybe every year, we do, but in the combination of property taxes, because you are hitting a different segment.
If CPI, can you take that into consideration, the, the fuel cost?
But I just need to ask this. You base the fuel cost on what, what was it a gallon?
This past budget year, uh, probably, no, a little less than three dollars a gallon is what we based the budget on.
This coming year?
No, the year we in right now. Yeah. And if you, if you look in our, in fact, I was looking at today, most departments are sixty to fifty percent what we budgeted. You know, we haven't, you know, we haven't budgeted, we didn't, we, we're fifty percent where we should be at eighty-three percent. Yeah, because fuel costs have dropped. Uh, this year, what did I tell you to do, about two and a quarter maybe, a gallon?
But when you do your budget, how do you do that? I mean, you gotta take into consideration, it might be three dollars.
Oh, you, you don't know. You don't know. You just...
It's a give or take thing.
Yeah, you just take a stab at it. And as I've said before, if you look at our local service stations for regular gas, right now, I think it's a dollar ninety-nine at the service station. Well, we pay less than that. We, we pay...
We just found it for a dollar seventy-four.
Dollar seventy-four a gallon.
Uh, the only thing I've got is, uh, within, probably last week, we could have two weeks, I've had numerous people come up and tell me that the golf course has started looking a lot better, and I was just wondering, I don't know what's, what I, probably hadn't been out there probably in six, eight months, and I played Saturday, and it looked really good, but a lot of people were coming up to me at different places and telling me how good the golf course looks, and whatever we done, thank this for it, and, you know. I'm not sure exactly what was done, but a lot of people have told me that playing good bit, that it's looking really, really good.
We've done some, when burdening was slow, put some of those folks out there to help some of it.
All right.
Just pine cones. If you got pine trees at home, you know how it is. And that's all that golf score has, pine cones. Pine cones and pine straw.
Well, the other thing, too, is, well, what, the Kansas Society, I mean, no, the American Red Cross, what they raise over twenty thousand dollars?
Twenty, three thousand dollars.
Right, and then I think lately you'll be having a Booster Club tournament. Dylan, I have your Booster Club tournament out there. So, uh, we have one of our better...
fundraiser for a lot of organizations.
We have one of our better ones in two and a half, almost three years. This past April, I think we generated twenty-three thousand dollars on that golf course.
Who's the replacement help that you, you hired full-time? I mean, Todd went to the well and said...
And they call him Flounder. I can't remember his first name. Chris, yeah. What's his last name?
Harris.
Chris Harris, yeah.
Well, now that you mention something about the golf course, did you find out about the, uh, hot dogs, the hot food?
Not yet, that's true. Not at all. Not at all. I was at a golf course in Florence Saturday, and they sell ice cream. I bought a sample. She says, they, she makes them, ladies, she makes them herself, and says she never has for two days. Well, they got license there. Yeah.